Well, good evening, everyone. I'll start us off. My name is Jason McCarthy and I work as the Planning and Zoning Administrator with Marquette Township. Ryan Diedrickson is also with us tonight. He is our staff planner. And tonight is the first Planning Commission meeting of the year, which is typically an organizational meeting, but we do have some business on the agenda tonight. And we'll get into that. I'm going to share my screen. We have a number of public tonight that can either speak during the public comment portion of the meeting or again, and/or again, if they wish, to the agenda item on the special use permit application for vacation rental. So the first thing we need to do is call the meeting to order. And I would ask that Steve Hakenin perhaps act as chair tonight until we get to the voting of elect or the three positions, Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary at some point this evening, if you would do that, Steve. And I am real. So go ahead.
Absolutely. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great. So I am going to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, January 13th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. And we shall start off with a roll call. So who do we have out there that wants to take a roll? Dennis?
Dennis Ferraro, 238 Eagle.
Ms. Cody?
Anthony Cody, 150 Lake Enchantment Road.
I'm Steve Haken. I live at 780 West Lake Enchantment Trail. And is Jim Johnson not with us this evening?
Not as of yet. Correct, not as of yet.
Okay, I guess we'll move on from there. So what we're going to do now is we're going to go to item three, which is the approval of the previous agenda. And that was from Wednesday, December 9th, 2020. Has everybody looked at the previous agenda for any changes that they would like to make? If there are no changes, but I have a motion to approve the agenda from the last meeting.
Meeting minutes.
Meeting minutes, excuse me.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Okay. Ferraro seconds. Okay, I hear two. Do we have votes in the affirmative for that? I will vote yes. Ms. Cody?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Okay. The next item I see.
So let me just introduce myself. I'm Linda Winslow. I am the board rep on the Planning Commission.
I'm sorry, Ms. Winslow, I wasn't aware of that.
Yep, so I'm introducing myself. So I guess I don't have a picture, but I guess that's okay because I don't want to touch anything and break it. So we'll just keep going.
Okay, okay. Well, welcome board.
Thank you.
I'm going to try to take over from this meeting that was so wonderfully done by Mr. Springer in the past. So you're going to have to be a little patient with me while we do this. So what we're going to do now is we're going to have the, I'm sorry, we should have done the approval of the agenda first. I think I got one ahead of myself. So the approval of the agenda, is there any changes for the agenda for this evening? Does anybody like to approve the agenda for this evening?
Move to approve it. Ferraro.
Okay, any seconds?
Cody will second it.
Okay, we have an approval of the agenda. I think we already did the meeting minutes from the previous meeting, so that's fine. Now we have the ability to have public comment now. And we also have the ability to have public comment when we discuss the new business item, which will be the special use permit or a proposed short-term rental. So if anybody would like to comment now, I guess we can allow that. Is that correct, Mr. McCarthy?
Correct, although we would ask for the sake of time, if your comments are relative to the agenda item, I would reserve them for that time, please. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. So I guess the next item on the agenda is the election of officers. And how do we go about that, Mr. McCarthy?
As the acting chair, Steve, you will entertain offers for candidates.
Okay. Could I make a motion for a candidate?
As the acting chair, I don't believe you can.
Okay. That could be awkward then because there's three of us in three positions, right?
Correct, I mean.
What are the positions?
Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary.
Technically, four of us with Johnson.
I'm sorry.
Well, five of you, yeah, five. If Jim gets here, so we have four with you now.
Okay, I make a motion to nominate Linda Winslow as Secretary.
I'll second that.
Do we? Question is, will she accept it?
So tell me what the secretary's responsibilities are there, Mr. McCarthy?
Basically, you'll sign off on on meeting minutes once they're approved. If there is a special meeting that needs to be called, one of the planning commissioners could come to you as the secretary and request that that occurs and you would then distribute. Staff takes care of most things. There is a pay involved with each of the three billets as well. It's not an astronomical, you know, fee or anything, but it is, I guess, commensurate with your time. And it was increased last year too. So basically, the other two planning commissioners get a certain amount. I think it's $36 in some sense. And then if you're one of the other billets, then it goes up incrementally. The chairperson would be the top. Not that that has anything to do with it. The secretary, you guys are doing this not for the minimal pay that we, that the township provides, but it is more so for, you know, helping the community along and representing your, you know, respective cohorts. So I would just say, you know, we would guide you through most of it. There's minimal effort involved.
Okay, as long as I have a guidance, I'm good with that. Okay, thank you. I'll accept your nomination.
Okay, so we need a second and then a vote on that. If that's.
I second it.
Okay.
Okay, I guess we'll call a vote on Ms. Winslow as the secretary. Mr. Ferraro?
Aye.
Ms. Cody?
Aye.
And I guess I will vote aye as well.
Congratulations, Madam Secretary.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we can do the, either the two, the Vice Chair or the Chair.
I move to nominate Steve Hakenin as Chair.
I'll second that. Now you can discuss it.
Can we do, can we discuss this at all, Jason?
Absolutely, there's a second on the floor.
Okay, what I would like to say, I'm honored to be nominated as a chairman. I want you to know, I work 10 hours a day. So I don't have a lot of time. I know that Mr. Ferraro is an esteemed attorney. I believe he's retired. I believe he might be working from home. But if he would, if he would consider it being the chairman, I'm sure that he knows as much about Robert's Rules of Order. And from what I've seen from him in the past meetings, he has a very, very strong interest in planning. So if I could defer and ask him if he would take the chairmanship, I would appreciate that a great deal.
Can I ask you, let me ask a question. So being new to the program here, was there some discussion about Jim Johnson assuming an official role? You know, for this year? Because I know Jim's been on the board along, the commission a long time, a longer time than I have. If there was there prior discussion, Jason or Ryan, about Jim Johnson taking a position?
No, that would be extremely unethical. Quite honestly.
I didn't know. I thought, okay, all right. Point well taken.
We don't, I mean, the beauty of a member not being here is that you can nominate that person unwillingly.
Okay. Jason, tell me, other than what I've observed Mike doing for the last three months, what additional duties are there other than calling the meeting to order, going through the agenda, trying to keep my ear to the ground to hear anything that might be of interest to the Planning Commission, taking advice from you and Ryan? What would, what are the other duties?
Beyond that, I think, you know, being cognizant of what the master plan is about, looking for opportunities, continuing your education, being a leader, obviously, for the Planning Commission. And then once a decision's made, hopefully championing that decision and moving forward in a positive direction. It's really more of, you know, how to move a meeting along. And in my, you know, and it's nothing against anybody else. But if you're looking at, you know, the flow chart of knowledge on the Planning Commission, I think, you know, Steve and Jim are certainly, you know, have been around the longest. But that doesn't. Linda has served as a planning commissioner previously and has, or I'm sorry, as a township trustee previously.
Not on the planning commission.
Sorry, so Bethany's very experienced as well. I'm not sure that she would want to do that initially. Coming on to the Planning Commission, probably want to, you know, get a year or two under your belt. I think Jim or Steve or Dennis would make ideal chairpersons. That's not a male female bias of any kind. And I think Jim has been very detailed in his reviews of site plans and has asked really, really good questions on off topics that are relevant to the situation as well.
Thank you, that's what I was asking for. I was, I guess I was trying to see, you know, in your opinion, would it be better for the Planning Commission? And I would accept a role of Vice Chairman if somebody wants to, you know, needs, if you need a person to fill that. But I was just thinking for the good of the Planning Commission, wouldn't it be better to have an experienced person who's been on the commission for a while, like Jim Johnson? I know he's had some health problems, but I think he's recovered now. Just your opinion, wouldn't it? Don't you think it'd be?
Yeah, I'd be happy to always give you my opinion. I think Jim would make a great chair. I do know that, you know, he operates a business as well and has, he's not been to every meeting, but he, you know, he rarely misses a meeting. I guess he missing this one, which isn't ideal. But, you know, it's probably for a very good reason and we'll make sure that we look into that. But the Vice Chair would be very important in that situation as well, moving forward. Because, you know, if he can't for some reason make it, then the Vice Chair's got to be able to step up.
Okay. So.
I think he would.
Is there a way, is there a way of withdrawing a nomination and maybe redirecting it?
You can, I would, there's a motion and a second on the floor. You can vote that down and then start over.
All right, well, just here's my, here's my feeling. I think I'd be glad to serve, but I think that for the good of the Planning Commission, I probably would be better in the role of a backup as Vice Chair. And if Jim couldn't be here, then I could, you know, move the meeting along and so on and so forth. I just think he has more experience and more depth than I do in this. And so I'm going to vote against this, against my own nomination to be the chair.
The motion, right? Jason?
Yeah, the motion maker could withdraw, I believe, the motion. It's, it doesn't, you know, we don't follow Robert's rules to a T. If your consensus, I mean, you're on video or being recorded. If the consensus is that you want to withdraw, then the motion maker was Danny Ferraro for Steve Hakenin to be Chair. So you'd have to.
Okay, what time?
Oh, I see, okay. I lost track of what was going on here. Right, so I can withdraw my motion to nominate Steve? And I can, does it need a, does that need any kind of a second or anything by the, or I can just withdraw it?
Correct.
Okay, I withdraw that motion. And I'd like to make a new motion to.
Well, let's, let's take care of that one. So you're making a motion to withdraw your motion, we need a second for that.
I'll withdraw my second and then it's gone.
Okay. Very well. Or attending new motions now.
Motion to nominate Jim as Chair.
I'll second that.
Bethany, Cody, seconds. Any discussion? Very well, Steve, you can call the question.
Um, we're going to vote on the election of Jim Johnson as Chairman of the Planning Commission. Mr. Ferraro?
Aye.
Ms. Cody?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Congratulations, Jim.
Okay, Vice Chair is left.
Can we have discussion before the, before any motion?
Um, no, you actually have to start it off with a motion.
I'll nominate Danny for, then Mr. Ferraro for the Vice Chairman.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Any discussion?
Dennis, we would be, Dennis, we would be here to support you. And I really believe that you'd do a great job. And I do need to get my feet wet a little bit or else I would help out too. But I would really love to see you in this position.
Okay. So let me, let me just throw a little monkey wrench into this. And I'm glad to accept the position. If, you know, if that's the vote. But let me ask Steve. Steve, I know you, you work full-time, but do you think that you would rather be the, you didn't want to be the Chair because, you know, maybe the responsibility of that in conflict with your job and so forth? But you, would you feel like you might rather be the Vice Chair?
I have no dog in this fight, Danny. I think you'd be a wonderful Vice Chairman.
Okay, but you, I'm just asking you if you would think you would be better at the position, having been on the board longer or on the commission longer?
No, I think you'd do a great job, Danny.
Okay.
Okay, let's have a vote on that as Mr., for Mr. Ferraro as Vice Chairman. Ms. Winslow?
Yes.
Ms. Cody?
Yes.
Can I vote yes as well?
Very well. Thank you, and we can move on. And as Danny is the Vice Chair, he will now direct the remainder of the meeting due to the fact that Mr. Johnson is not present. So the next item of business is seven, 7A.
So you, you're doing a baptism by fire here, right?
I've guided you through it, how about that?
Okay, so we have a, item number seven, we have a hearing on a special use permit, proposed short-term rental on property located within an urban residential zoning district. And the property is located at 1983 Cherry Street, Marquette, Michigan. The applicant is Danielle Vandreel. And I believe we have present Danielle's partner, Dave Errett, here tonight as well. So would it be appropriate to, and we have also members of the public, would it be appropriate at this point, Jason, ask your guidance on this? Would it be appropriate to hear public comment at this point?
Not yet. Why don't we have Ryan discuss what the project is and the background on it? And then definitely as the Vice Chair, you want to open up the public hearings. That's what this is all about. I'm going to scroll down for Ryan and get into his staff report, so go ahead.
All right, yeah, let me run through this. So staff did receive an application for special use permits for special land use being a short-term rental. And like Dennis said, it is located at 1983 Cherry Street in the urban residential zoning district. The applicant is Danielle Vandreel and her partner, Dave Errett, who are both on with us tonight to answer any questions or I guess kind of gauge and see how this process, you know, works. So all, let me start with saying that it is in the urban residential zoning district. The Vandreels or Danielle and Dave are both in contract to purchase the property in question and are looking to operate a short-term rental when they are not present in the home. All neighbors within 300 feet have been notified by a letter. Those letters went out on December 21st. And the Mining Journal public hearing notice for this public hearing that we're having tonight was published in the Mining Journal, December 28th, per state statute. If you go down to, well, first you can see what a short-term rental is defined as. And that is being a residential dwelling, not owner occupied, which is rented all or in part on a daily, weekly, or monthly basis for 90 days or less. I'll also add that the applicants have been made aware of any tax implications that comes along with operating a short-term rental in regard to the Home Set Act. You know, with this, in Michigan, and that has become, been a topic of past short-term rental processes in the past year, especially. Short-term rental is a special use in the urban residential zoning districts. We keep going down, you'll see the 300-foot buffer map that shows which neighbors have been made aware of the public hearing. And you'll see the zoning map. I'll wait for Jason to get there. So all neighbors within that buffer yard are 300 feet in proximity to the subject parcel. If you scroll down a little further, you'll see where it is situated in the urban residential zoning district. So completely surrounded in urban residential. You have the city of Marquette to the east. I did also send out a narrative that was updated by the applicants to the Planning Commission. And it's essentially the same narrative that is included in the packet tonight. But they did address some additional potential concerns or implications that are actually stated in any special use permit application to address, and those include traffic implications or tenant and guest selection process that they intend to use, as well as their property manager, which they, they might consider having in terms of some local family, if any problems arise. So they do go on to describe their situation while they're looking at the home, how they plan to, you know, select guests and tenants for the short-term rental. And I guess I'll leave it at that. If you have any questions for staff or, I guess I would invite Dave or Danielle, if they would like to say anything when that time is appropriate, whether it's now or during public comment, kind of add to that report.
Yeah, let's, let's, let Danny open up the public hearing. And then we can hear from everybody that's present that wants to have, you know, some opinion on the matter.
Okay, we'll open this up for public comment at this point. Who would like to go first? I see a question on a chat board from Chris Wagner to everybody. It was up and then it disappeared. Oh, wait a second, let's take a look.
Sorry, he's asking how many other vacation rentals are in this neighborhood?
Yes.
And in the rest of the township? You know, surprisingly, we, we made this zoning text amendment. I believe it was almost two years ago now, along with the allowance of tiny homes as a way to not shake things up, but, you know, to allow people to have some different land uses on their property and to try to create some housing for all stages of life. That was the impetus for some of the zoning text amendments that were made. Surprisingly, we have not been overrun with vacation rentals. I can confidently say that I believe there's less than 10 that we have approved in the township. So density-wise, as far as that particular neighborhood, I do not have the exact answer on that right now, but I would be happy to map others that are in that proximity. Honestly, I don't think that there are any within a few blocks. And I remember one being only in the Trobridge Park area. Most of these have been out in rural, more rural areas, actually. So I hope that answers your question.
Mr. Wagner, any further questions or comments? The further question is, is the request from the current owner someone looking to purchase the property for use as a vacation rental?
That, I think, yeah. Is yes, right, Ryan?
Yeah, yeah, the Vandreels, well, Danielle and Dave are both, my understanding is, under contract to purchase the home and then to use as part-time their residence, but part-time short-term rental.
Was.
If you don't mind, I would have been speaking to that to clarify because it's a very interesting kind of situation. Is that okay?
Eric speaking, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Um, so Danielle Vandreel is from Marquette and she and I are both travel nurses. We want to get in Marquette before the price of homes gets any higher. And this was kind of our only way to really do so. We want to be in Marquette full-time and this is kind of our short-term way to get that accomplished. We aren't going to be renters buying in a place just to rent out. We primarily plan on living there in between contracts. It's just that the way that travel nursing works is we sign 13-week contracts. We leave and actually the hospitals within Marquette and Northern Michigan University, we plan on trying to rent two nurses in our situation at that same exact time. We're applying to go to Northern Michigan University for the fall for our nurse practitioner degrees to do our clinicals in the area. So we plan on being back as much as we possibly can. But as of right now, especially with COVID, there's a big need for travel nurses. So we're gone for a big chunk of time, which requires us to pay for rent in other locations. So this won't be primarily a vacation rental. We just collect money off it. This is going to be our home that we potentially are going to move into within the next few months. So this is kind of a way to mitigate some of those costs in the meantime, while we still are paying insane rents up in the Bay Area right now.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments or questions? Question, thanks for the back. Mr. Wagner says, thanks for the background, Dave. If there's a problem with renters at the location as a neighbor, who do we contact? Dave, would you answer that?
Yes, actually, I already kind of proposed a algorithm that, so Beth, Beth Kristnarge is right here. She's Danielle Vandreel's mom. She is going to be there as the property manager for any times that we need anything. She lives within miles of the location. But I created an algorithm just to kind of make everything, everyone as neighbors as confident as they possibly can. So for once we leave for an assignment, all neighbors that wish to have our contact information will have Danielle, myself, and Beth's email and phone number. No matter the renter, we will have house rules in place that will be made in partnership with the neighbors. So I would like to discuss with the neighbors, if this move forward, you know, what is most important to you? I do not want, you know, they're going to be my neighbors soon, so.
What is most important to you? I do not want, you know, they're gonna be my neighbors soon. So. You know, if they don't want to see more than two cars, if they don't want to hear anyone pass seven PM, those are the house rules that we're willing to put in place. So these are gonna be things that I want to have a discussion with. The neighbors um when making these rules. Also, when it comes to the neighbor finding any reason, no matter how big or small with any of the potential tenants that. They can reach out to us at any time, and we would be able to mitigate that by. Um contacting Beth. Beth would contact the rental agency who we have would be VRBO is the. Probably the most expensive and has the most resources and. Um able to really help mitigate any risks that we have. Um and besides that. We have, let me see here. Yeah, so yeah, be Danielle and I, while we're gone, even though we might be in different time zones or be. Um on assignment or working at the time, Beth is always, she agreed to be part of um this entire process and. Be able to handle any questions, any concerns that need to be escalated, you know, for any reason. And. As far as that, we yeah, the whole other thing we have set in place was to have um a slow escalation process. Beth is could be at the house in minutes if she really needed to be. So. Our number one goal is to mitigate any problems prior to either even being a problem. So we don't, you know, we want to work with our neighbors and partners. Rather than just having them be our neighbors, because it's gonna be our neighborhood, so.
Ryan?
Dennis, I do have um some public comment to add at this time that we did receive from the neighbors' letters when they went out. Um we did get one written comment and input on the matter, and then one phone call that I received. Um the written comment I did provide to you guys um as of yesterday by email, and that was from Michael. Uh Dionich at nineteen thirty-three uh Cherry Street, and he did have some concerns as far as. Um the fabric and integrity of the neighborhood as well as um. Home valuations of the surrounding um homes to the short term rental. And he did express that in a written email uh to myself, which I I did reply to him and um. Did invite him to come to the meeting, which he indicated that he may or may not do. Doesn't look like he's on tonight. And I did also feel the phone call from Ed Kyler, who is located at nineteen fifty-five Waldo. Um he had some similar concerns regarding the short term rental um as far as really just questions about noise or disruption. Um and parking as well as well as kind of the neighborhood character too. So. I told them both that I would relay those comments to the planning commission at tonight's meeting. Again, really encourage them to come to the meeting themselves to uh reiterate that. Um but it looks like they are not here. But I just wanted to add that input that we did receive those two from the letters that were sent out.
Uh as Dave uh spoke, I am I'm Danielle's mother, and I just wanted to say that I have lived in Marquette since I went to Northern. And graduated in eighty-eight, and I've lived here for thirty-five years. I've been in this same house for thirty-one years. So I'm. You know, I I'm always around. I work at Marquette El Doris. I'm literally probably four miles away from that house when I'm at work. I'd be happy to give my cellphone, email, work phone, um home address to anybody that. Has concerns or needs to reach me. You can reach me at any time, and I can be there in a matter of minutes. So I just wanted to uh. To uh try to calm anybody's fears that there's going to be, you know, loud noises and parties at that house. And that's just not the case. What they're looking for, they're just looking for some supplemental income while they're also traveling. So. I would be, I would be here at all times to be able to be reached.
Uh I have a question for uh Mr. Eric. Uh Mr. Eric. In your written. Comments to the uh to the planning commission. Um you made uh some comments on the limit of number of cars. And the availability for parking of those cars. And you also made some representations regarding the age limits and the number of. Uh people who would be permitted to rent it at one particular time. Would you address those for the uh assembled?
Yes, um actually, I have it right here too. I mean, in short, we, it's our home and I I mean, as the neighbors are concerned, you know. With any parking, et cetera, or noise complaints, we want it to be as if the, you know. It was gonna be our neighbors. So um we did have a limit. We don't want more. I believe I said more than. Let me just double check, so I have actual email here. Alright, so as far as traffic, we don't foresee it having any. Instrincts or adding any strength to local traffic. Sorry, my screen keeps going.
I do have this updated one. Up on my screen, if anyone will want me to share it as well.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Alright.
Oops, sorry.
And again, this was sent out, uh is received a little late after the packets went out, but um. First few paragraphs are the same, I believe, Dave, and then um what Dennis is looking at is the traffic, tenant, guest selection, property manager.
Yes, yeah, so we only want two cars per each, you know, if this is all gonna be written in the rules, and if honestly. The neighbors discussed that they don't want that many cars, but the driver was large enough to accommodate any cars. There's a um garage to. Accommodate those that they'd have full access to the time that they'd be renting. Um so I don't foresee them having any street parking or any reason for them to be. Anywhere that would be obstructing the neighborhood as far as traffic goes. And when it comes to like tenant and guest selection, we don't really want anyone larger than four people in the house. It sleeps about, there's four beds in there. But our, my, our primary rental concern is to have people who. Kind of share the same values as us and are almost doing the same thing. We are actually part of a network that are constantly looking for a place to live while they're on nursing assignments. And that's who we thought we could potentially rent to is other nurses who are in the same situation as us needing short term housing. And it would coincide with us being gone at the same time. Um no one age under the age of twenty-one. Um I could even work with the neighbors if they wanted. No one younger than that. I don't want anyone having a party in my house. So. I completely want the same thing for our house that the neighbors probably don't want either. And. As far as um the quiet hours, another thing I'm willing to work with the neighbors, it's all could be written within the rules. And any concerns, if it is, you know, anything needs to be escalated again, like to. Um reiterate what Beth said, she's there and we are only a phone call away. So anything as far as that can be handled immediately. But we're pretty much trying to set all rules in place and selection, and so none of these things ever are issues.
Thank you, Mr. Eric. Any more public comment or questions? Okay. Hearing none, then uh. I guess we can proceed to a vote at this point.
No, 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 no.
We can't.
Some planning commissioner questions here.
Okay, I thought I asked for questions, but uh I'm sorry, I said public comment and questions. I I included uh. Uh planning commission commissioners on that. I'm sorry. Go ahead, uh Steve.
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. First, I guess this is more of a um an ordinance question. So if someone is renting the place for longer than ninety days, then what? It's not a short term rental anymore.
Correct, and there's no requirement for a permit for that.
Okay, that's fine. Now, as far as the uh the applicant goes, in the first um letter that we got from Ms. Vandriel, she said that we we'd be renting to. Uh traveling nurses and then offered VRBO and Airbnb. And in the second letter, she also. And or nursing students attending Northern Michigan University. Um so only nursing students over twenty-one, you would you would rent to, is that correct?
We possibly could. So my nursing degree was um attained as a second degree, a second bachelor's. I was twenty-three when I first obtained my nursing license. Um also on that, we have, there's DNP programs, there's the FNP programs, there's a lot of master's programs at um Northern Michigan. University for um, it's the same thing as when we look for potential. Um roommates when we're going out, we don't, you know, we have rooms with others who are in college, but there's. Um many postgraduate degrees offered within the area that we think that'd be perfectly fine.
Okay, so graduate students or anybody over twenty, nobody, no one under twenty-one, twenty-one years old, is that correct?
Yes.
And let me ask another question of the uh the planning staff. So, Mr., the uh the applicants, they're aware that their. Their homestead tax exemption would be uh would be gone. So their taxes would be much higher on this property than if they were. If it was a homestead exemption on it. How do they get their homestead exemption back?
Well, they would have to demonstrate that they're not advertising for, you know, some kind of uh vacation rental program.
Okay.
Yeah, just a couple of points. I mean, for the general public's reference too. You know, I understand it is a, it is a smaller lot. Um but it's it's planning staff's theory to attract young people, professionals to our community. That's what makes. Um our community strong, professionals, blue collar, white collar, what have you. And. I I wouldn't want, I I believe Mr. Eric's um. You know, offering to give his phone number and email address out is probably sufficient. I wouldn't want him to shoehorn himself. Into a specific demographic per se that would could limit his um. His ability to to generate, you know, revenue off of it, not revenue, but rent. You know, there's a process, you know, we also, you can also call the Marquette Township Zoning Office, and I would prefer that you do because. A conditional use permit can be um given and then take it away. Uh it's reviewed on an annual basis um for compliance. And if all of a sudden we have a laundry list of zoning violations, or the sheriff's department was called on. Multiple, you know, times for loud partying and uh cars being in the right of way. Um those things all add up, and we would be sure to bring that back to the planning commission's attention. So. The reason that we chose to make this a special use. And not a permitted use by right was so that we can review these on an individual basis. And to perhaps add conditions if it's appropriate uh based on the commentary that's received by the public. So I I think he's done, and you know, we get lots of different types of applications and application content. Um I I would say that uh this gentleman and his uh his lovelies uh. Uh submission to us was very thorough. And addressed a lot of the things that you as planning commissioners would want to review. Uh within that conditional use permit section of the ordinance. There are, if Ryan scrolls down to that, there are. Um several things that when the planning commission is considering a conditional use, they want to review, go up. Yeah, so conditions and safeguards, those are the the items that the planning commission really needs to consider when approving a special use permit. So. Uh I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that process and why this this occurs. It's so that we can review them on an individual individual basis. But also so that there's a check and balance later on in case something goes awry with it. So. You know, I I I think he's done a a fine job of uh. You know, presenting this. Sometimes you have to um see how it goes, and I'm not, I'm not advocating for. You know, whether what you do with it. Um we we just administer it, but I I think that. I wanted to explain that, I guess, for those that might not understand the process.
Jason, I have a question for you. Um I I uh I agree, Mr. Eric and. And Danielle have, you know, given us a lot of information here. Uh and if as I understand you, Jason. Based on the information given to us, it's up to us to exercise our discretion as to whether or not we think this. Um should be granted. But uh I also want to clarify something, uh and correct me if I'm wrong. Um if we approve this, uh we're not making our approval conditional upon. In other words, our our motion to approve will not include the conditions. While there only can be two cars, there only can be four people, there only can, and we're not gonna like, I mean, or are we?
Only if you choose to add those as part of your uh motion to approve. You know, we have denied, we have denied short term rentals as well. One in particular I can think of, and Steve probably remembers. There was just a lot of. Um complaints on the property prior to, um they weren't perhaps a a good neighbor to start with. And the planning commission had no problem discerning that. You know. In their decision, I would say that this is a situation where you have a potential new uh homeowner, a young couple. Um professionals and. I think that should be considered as well as what I'm saying.
Right, and and I what I was trying to get at is, uh given your 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 uh. Information to the to the commission that these things can be reviewed if there's complaints, that these can be. Uh taken away and just as they're given. So I mean, uh to me, I. It would seem like it's not necessary to add uh conditions to our motion. We just, we've heard. We've interviewed this person in person, we've heard his representations. Uh it would seem like. You know, we can exercise our discretion and and, you know, either grant it or deny it, but I don't think we have to necessarily impose. And add to conditions uh in this particular case on approval or denial. Anyway.
Keep in mind uh Dennis too, that there are a couple of conditions that are required if if an applicant is approved of the short term rental. Um they have to acquire a township business license, which gets renewed annually. And that's a pretty good checks and balances to see if short term rentals are still operating every year as well. And they have to um. Have an initial fire department, fire code review inspection, and then have that completed by annually as well.
But those are the only two requirements by law.
By the ordinance, in addition to the parking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other uh comments by the commissioners of or uh any public comment, any more questions?
If I may, I I would like to just add that. Danielle, I have been talking about this for a while, and as travel nurses, we've been kind of all over, and we just, it's kind of exciting for us to pick. Marquette to move to, to be our home. So. This is a really big decision for us, and this is really just a kind of end to a mean to getting it done um. Appropriately, so we just, you know, to all our neighbors who have concern, like you're gonna be hopefully our neighbors and. The integrity of our home and our neighborhood is just as important to us as it is to you. So. I don't want to change anything about Marquette. That's why I fell in love with it when we visited the first time. So. Yeah, that's all I kind of wanted to add.
Alright, any further discussion? Alright, let's uh enter the chair or vice chair will entertain a motion on um. Whether to uh allow a special use permit. Uh uh for the proposed short term rental unit. Located at nineteen eighty-three Cherry Street, Marquette, Michigan.
Uh this is Linda Winslow. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is made. To approve the short term uh. For a special use permit for a short term rental unit on property located at nineteen eighty-three Cherry Street, Marquette, Michigan. He'll take the role.
Any discussion?
Any discussion, any more discussion?
I I think it's a great idea. I wish them luck. Uh I have a friend that's got a daughter that's a traveling nurse. It's not an easy profession. Uh so good luck to both of you.
Thank you.
Any any other commissioner wish to make a comment?
This is Linda Winslow. Um I'd like to say welcome to the neighborhood, and uh it's nice to have Danielle come back home.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to add, it's good to see young people moving to Marquette. I think that's a trend, but uh I'm glad you're increasing. I think that's a trend, but I'm glad you're increasing the trend. Okay, let's vote.
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call. Mr. Hykenen?
Yes.
Ms. Winslow?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Is that it? Do we call everybody? All right, motion carries. That's it.
Thanks for joining, Dave. We'll catch up with you tomorrow and get you everything you need to get satisfied.
There's a comment from Chris Wagner to everybody. He lives at thirteen twenty-five Granite Street, and he says, welcome to you.
Oh, thank you so much.
Denny, can you close the public hearing?
We will close the public hearing now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, Ryan will be in touch with you. Welcome, Dave, nice job on your submit all. And if there's anything that we can do further, let us know.
Thank you, we look forward to it. Again, everyone, thank you so much.
Okay, let's move on to item number eight, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business that we need to discuss?
Not at this time.
Moving on to correspondence, we have a indication that there is correspondence regarding twenty twenty-one road maintenance, RFP. Ryan or Jason, Ryan, you want to address this?
Yeah, just a quick update, and just for you guys to take a look at and be in the loop as far as what a road maintenance project is going to be. The past two or three years, I believe, has been all preventative maintenance, crack ceiling, chip ceiling. We're looking at a new treatment called GSB eighty-eight this year going into twenty twenty-one. So the road committee met at their last meeting on January fifth and basically directed us, after the board directed them to move ahead with some RFP development. So we signed a agreement for bid assembly and packaging with U P engineers and architects. So that went out last week. They're essentially going to assemble a bid package and get these bids received. We're hoping that we'll get them back maybe by the end of February, if not early March. It's usually pretty typical, I think, to see bids come back within in under sixty days. So there's a pretty, pretty good cohesive amount of of roads that are slated for crack ceiling specifically, there's a little bit of chip ceiling, and then we'll see what comes back with this new, this new GSB eighty-eight treatment. And and we'll go from there, the road committee will then maybe perhaps have to whittle down, or hopefully maybe they can add some projects, depending on our budget and what we get back. But just to keep you guys apprised of everything, but the road committee is up to, that's the latest and greatest.
May I ask you, Ryan, is this GS eighty-eight? The sand?
Yeah, what they 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 use sand on, it's like, it's a special type of emulsifier that they spray from the back of a truck. They use this product called gelsinite, that you can only find, I think, in Utah and Saudi Arabia. We've checked around other communities to see how they've liked it, if others have actually used it. We got some mixed reviews. The road committee only had, we've only got a small section of roads slated for potential use of it. I don't know if we'll really will be using it or not. I think it's pretty expensive when you've got that small.
Okay.
Roads, yeah.
Okay.
They do sand it, though, after they lay that down.
Okay.
Any other discussion or comments on this? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to item number ten A, Township Board Report, I guess, Linda.
Um, yes, this is my first meeting, and and I don't really have anything to share other than we did review the two proposals for, that were sent to the township board, and we'll be reviewing them again at the next meeting. The one for the marijuana facilities and the other one for the food truck. So other than that, I'll report back after the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Linda? Okay, hearing none, let's move to ten B. I guess we've just heard the road committee report, right, Ryan?
Essentially, yes. Pretty much it's. There are two vacancies on the committee, I think there's a one year and a three year. So it'd be nice to have at least one more or fill it up to five, we've only got three. If you know of anybody, they like to talk roads, that's the place to be. Other than that, the next meeting is February second, I'm not sure what we might have on the agenda. We'll see if we have a meeting then.
Okay, thank you. Recreation Committee Report is, who would that be? Would that be you, Ryan, as well?
Yeah, we can go through their last meeting, so they last met December fifteenth. You guys recall that, well, it's obvious that David and Mike are no longer on the planning commission, but they're also no longer on the recreation committee. But Dan Eversin did get appointed from the board to the rec committee as well, but I think there is still one more vacancy on that committee. And I know Jason is aware that there is an application, if not multiple applications, in for that spot. But essentially, the last December meeting, there was discussion on the ice rink roof, discussion on possibly getting some cost estimates from Sarah Kirk, who did a initial design on the ice rink roof. There is also discussion about the patio rain runoff runoff that's over at the warming building at Lions Field, and there's a solution to that to add some pea gravel. There's also discussion regarding the ice rink itself and some damage to it, even before there was ice. So they found some solutions for that and recommended some solutions or or some some work to be delegated to the township manager, which he then did. There's also discussion about a winter maintenance plan and a map that we shared, staff shared at that meeting, too. But on the next meeting, as I think it's January nineteenth is the next meeting for the recreation committee, if I'm not mistaken. But again, if you guys know of anybody that wants to sit on that, I think there's a couple of vacancies still.
Any further comments or questions of Ryan? All right, let's move on to ten D, Planning and Zoning Report. Jason, anything, or is that Ryan as well?
It soon will be, Ryan's going to be transitioning his role a little bit in twenty twenty-one and will be hopefully what will become your primary contact for planning commission related duties. He has certainly earned that, and I think he does a fine job. So I'll still be here in support, but I will be working on some larger type projects, hopefully with the DDA continuation of some larger road projects and also in support of day to day duties, let's not, let's not kid ourselves. We have a lot going on. Lately, we've been meeting about with property owners along US forty-one in lieu of the twenty twenty-one project that's going to occur on US forty-one from Commerce Drive down to all the way to Front Street in Marquette, actually. But we're trying to add some safety improvements and some access management improvements to areas that we can. So we've been meeting with property owners, we we've had a few victories, we've had a few defeats. But it's always going to be a little bit of compromise here and there. But we think that we've met with everybody that we wanted to, and there was about seven or eight locations, and I think six of them will probably get some treatment. So improving access to, for the customer, also to improve safety. The U P Builders Show, we issued a temporary zoning permit for, they're going to be occupying the Westwood Mall April twenty-third through the twenty-fifth, I believe it is. So they'll be inside and outside of the Westwood Mall, and that permit was issued contingent upon compliance with any DHHS or CDC rulings that are out there for the ongoing pandemic. Peak Fitness has converted somewhat from what was Peak Fitness, and there was another couple other entities that were in their masseur. And now we have a a gym in there, an auto detailing place, and probably some ancillary office space at some point. So you may be noticing some changes over there, we've been getting them through the zoning process for that.
Where where is that, Jason?
Peak Fitness, which is just north of where Jandron's new development is.
Okay.
The township has been forward with a website revamp. The impetus for the website revamp, holy cow, I say that a few times, is to make information easier to find, basically. So as a professional photographer, let's say, and I have a website, people want to be able to find whatever they're looking for, usually within two or three clicks, right? So that's what we're working with. We have a a contract now with a a company called Civic Plus, and all they do is municipal websites. So we've looked at a few variations, we've kind of picked a template, and now we're going to be populating the site with the information. Most of the information's already there, it's just making it easier for people. And, you know, I would say, I would love to say that it's, you know, a bunch of young people come to our website, but it's probably middle aged and more or older, and we want to make that more user friendly, both from an aspect of deflecting phone calls and and add, you know, providing the information that gives people answers maybe before they call us on a lot of common questions about, you know, what's my zoning? Well, you can look up your parcel based on this web program that that's available through Marion County, et cetera, et cetera. So there is a committee meeting on that, and I would say within the next three to six months, we'll be launching a new website. We wanted to keep tonight's agenda a little light because we knew that we were going to, you know, go through the election of officers, and then we knew that this special use public hearing was going to be a little lengthy. So we try to keep, if we can, obviously, once we get into summer, some of these meetings will go a little bit longer because, you know, we may have a couple site plans and a couple special use permits all on the same agenda. But but for tonight, we just wanted to keep it short and sweet. We'll keep adding to the reports and keeping you and getting you apprised of where projects are at. I know that we owe Lynn Linda and Bethany some documents, primarily the zone, a copy of the zoning ordinance and a copy of the master plan. So Ryan and I will work to get you those in the coming days. For now, you can always go to our website, they're up there, although we do need to update the master plan, Ryan, if you could put that down on your list. We just need to update the new PDF for that. So, yeah, it's a busy office. We've historically, at least in the last ten years, I'll be celebrating my ten year anniversary this year, and we have had a progressive group, and we get a lot of stuff done, and it's been a lot of fun. So the planning commission's really where it's at. I mean, yeah, the township board, they make policy and do those things, but the planning commission's really where all the fun happens, in my view. So glad that you're all a part of it, and we look forward to working with you moving forward.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions or comments? Okay. Regarding the item, next item, ten E, zoning text amendment recommendations to the board, an update. We've we've read the notices in the newspaper, but any comments by Ryan or Jason on this?
I'll just say that it'll be on their next meeting as a second reading with potential adoption. Once that occurs, there'll be a notice that has to go with it into the newspaper within fifteen days, and I believe it's seven days after the expiration of that notice, it becomes live. So we do anticipate we'll be, we know that there's interest in both medical and adult use recreational marijuana facilities in the community. So we'll be processing those, and you'll be assisting us right along with it because they are all special use permits, so that we can review those on a case by case basis, if if it's approved.
Okay. Any questions or comments of Jason on that point? Okay, then let's move on to agenda item number eleven, announcements, do we have any announcements? Hearing none, move on to the next item, public comment. Is there any any further public comment?
I don't see any anything in the chat, and I know that it's just the six of us left.
Okay. Any, moving to item number thirteen, any additional comments by the planning commission? By the commissioners?
Sure, I've got a question, I I guess it's more of a general question. What is the township going to be doing about glass recycling? Is there, is there any, has there any decision been made? I mean, would there be collection? Do we have to run it out to the transfer facility? I mean, what do I do with all my glass?
I would ask you, Linda was there, but I would ask you to review the the previous board meeting on that topic or at least on the recycling contract topic, or I think there was an agenda item on that, Linda?
It wa, it was, Steve, and you you know, I I'm right alongside you here because I I also want that to be a priority issue to look at. I think we have to relook at the contract we have with our hauler and then look at what it is we can do. And the person who is in charge of Public Works is, they're looking at what they can do as well. From a personal perspective, I did run my glass out to the drop site, and it wasn't, it wasn't difficult, but it's not as seamless as it should be with pickup. And so so we'll continue, and I'll bring that back to the board. The planning commission is interested in knowing what's going on, too.
That'd be great.
I will.
I had a question on that, when the original publicity came out in the newspapers about the single stream recycling, wasn't glass included in the initial public discussion that it was going to be picked up? Or am I imagining things? I I thought that that was supposed to be part of the package from the very beginning.
That was part of the campaign, yeah.
Yeah, what happened?
Well, finance has happened, I think, and I I think in a good discussion would be really to have a discussion with the supervisor who's been intimately involved with it. I know that she has some, you know, opinions about how they rolled that out without really, you know, I understand that they are a, you know, a separate kind of governmental body that has their own bylaws and such. But, you know, education goes a long way when you're trying to roll something out, and I I think they just kind of came out and shot from the hip, and I think that the the township has responded to to that issue, you know, pretty extensively, actually.
Okay.
Whether it be letters from the manager or the supervisor directly to the Marquette County Solid Waste Authority.
Okay, so you're you're suggesting that there's there's possibly a solution in the works, potentially?
I think down the road there will be. That's really more of a question for, you know, the manager or in in the board because it is kind of a policy issue, and whether or not they're willing to spend the money on it. I know that the demand is there, but I think that you can also, I I don't know if they were going to try to have, they were going to try to have something at the Public Works Building, but there's just not the room. And I just don't think it's the place to do it either. So hopefully we'll come up with something, but for the time being, it's going to be as is.
Okay, and as far as any input from this body, the planning commission, is there any anything to be gained, or is there any, even any provision for us to make any comment or?
You could send, you can send a letter of support either way to the township board or ask them to, you know, task the planning commission with the investigating the situat, I mean, there's lots of different things you could do as a planning commission to provide some comment on it.
Okay, and you say Lynn is is working on this?
She would be probably the, either John or her, the best point of contact for question, detailed questions about it.
Okay, so it would be, it wouldn't be inappropriate for one of the, one of the commissioners to communicate with Lynn and ask her if there's any way that the plant commission could support. uh could uh support her efforts to uh make this a more uh user-friendly program?
Absolutely, no, we hope to have that kind of conversation between the Planning Commission and the board, sure.
All right, great. Okay, um any other uh comments by commissioners? All right, uh and uh in as much as my cell phone is my only timepiece, and it's in the kitchen being charged, uh I have to ask somebody what time it is so we can say what time we're gonna adjourn.
Who's got it, Ryan?
Eight-ten.
Okay, uh I would uh ask unanimous consent to uh adjourn this meeting at eight-ten.
I concur.
All right. Okay, we are adjourned, thank you very much. See you next time, all right? Nice meeting you, Linda, nice seeing you.